I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, December 12th, 2022, and the time is 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome to members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hemen, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. We have an addition to the packet for the truth and taxation presentation. It is simply the property tax levy and rate summary taxes payable in 22 and 23 from Ellers. This is a document that was originally distributed to the board at the September 26th board meeting, or including it again this evening. We also have several items in the consent agenda under personnel items are some appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, some leaves of absences, and we also have some resignations and a gift agreement. And then we will also have a resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. And that will be an item for individual action.
Okay, thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented moved by Jeff? Second. My Cory, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, motion carries. We're now on to public comment, the public comment portion of our meeting, and I have a some guidelines to read. We do have four individuals signed up to speak tonight. This is an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, guardians, students and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy 206 regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You are prohibited from making comments about specific students, staff and administrators. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the board chair, identify yourself, and if you represent a group, we require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. The board has allotted up to a total of 30 minutes for public comment at regular school board meetings. I will now begin to call on those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Amy Gerwitz will be monitoring the speaker's time. She will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, 30 seconds and 10 second intervals. Again, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes. Okay, I will now call the first individual, which is C.C. Lindstraw.
And Claudia, just while C.C.'s coming to the mic, just want to remind people too, we have a second public comment this evening after the truth and taxation portion that's specific to the truth and taxation component. So just if there are people here for that, I just wanted to remind people that second part coming up later.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I am a member of the Age Friendly Northfield Steering Committee, and I have a couple of other steering committee members here with me tonight. AARP and the World Health Organization started the age friendly communities concept, and Northfield has been involved in this for six years. The movement is driven by the knowledge that where we live determines how we experience aging as much or more than our individual choices. We are here tonight from Age Friendly Northfield to commend the work of two divisions of your staff, Community at Enrec and your high school. Through the marvelous generous flexibility and creativity of Shane Byer, Erin Bailey, Melissa Bernhardt, Cole Nelson and Bubba Sullivan, we are enhancing and creating steps forward as we strive to advance health equity for older adults in our community. We have passed out a copy of an ad that you will start seeing around town talking about walking. Walking at the high school has been an option in our community for decades. And guided by the Rice County Public Health Survey, we now know that we need more free and affordable physical activities for our older adults. Well, we are getting one that is going to be dynamite through the work of your staff with the age friendly and city support. We have purchased a bench, a coat rack so that people can come in and change their footwear, hang up their coats and walk through the beautiful climate controlled, safe, no stairs hallways of NHS. It is three laps to a mile. That is better than any walking option in town, and it's free. The next option that you're going to hear about is brand new. This is exciting. Pickleball Sunday. Okay, pickleball Sunday is coming to Northfield High School, and we are working with the high school staff, Melissa in particular, age friendly, city funding, and a large group of volunteers to have Sunday from noon to four available for free and affordable pickleball for older adults because of what it means to older adults to have this kind of activity. There will be options for people who have never tried it before to come from 12 to two, and there will be then experienced players from three to four. So what we would like to say is, thank you. Commending your staff who have collaborated to advance our health equity for all of the older adult state community.
Thank you, C.C. Okay, next we have Jenny Nelson. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you, Claudia, and thank you to the board. My name is Jenny Nelson, and I am a resident and a parent of children in the school district. Regarding the high school construction referendum, it has been said that with inflation, the district could possibly save up to $4 million if we move now instead of waiting. This is based on assumptions and not considering the construction materials market that has always fluctuated up and back down. To me, guesses should not be a green light to spending this much money this quickly on something most of us are still confused about why we are spending upwards of 60 million and not seeing any new construction or increased square footage. One of the reasons why the new Oatana High School was such a steal, as has been mentioned here before, is that the school district managed subcontractors during the pre-con phase. This is a construction process that could shave off millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars. A second concern I have is the board's recent decision to remove 14 rural and township polling places and keeping four city locations for this upcoming special election. Sending out postcards and notifying voters of the upcoming special election date with 45 days for absentee voting does nothing to help offset the added time, mileage and cost that rural and township voters will have to now sacrifice while city voters do not sacrifice this. That is a clear example of discrimination. And then the severely limiting polling places from 24 down to four on a scale of tax impact this large is a form of voter suppression. A reason I feel that these implications were not discussed is due to the rush nature to vote here before the first of the year to get this to ballot. But as our facilities director has talked about before, there are no emergencies or immediate needs of the high school structure. Also, there is not a capacity issue, nor will there be one in the future, near future, sorry. With all of these factors stated, I feel especially election in a non statewide election year for this large of a tax impact is not warranted and could create mistrust within our community. There is nothing wrong with spending more time to discuss alternative construction methods such as subcontractor management to lower this cost of either a new high school construction or the remodeling options, and even obtaining grants for sustainable construction material use and/or mechanical equipment along with an election date that is not both costly to the school district and burdensome to rural and township district taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Up next is Miles Martig.
Hello, I'm Miles Martig, representing myself. I'm a Northfield High School student. Today, on the bus ride from my knowledgeable meet, I passed around my notebook collecting signatures for a petition. I'm not submitting it as an official petition or anything. It's just to show that this is something that everyone pretty much agrees with. 24 signatures on that bus ride from people who said that they support that they support funding for improvements to the high school with the capital improvement that that is being discussed at this meeting and Jenny was talking about earlier. And they also support pathway to the alternate option that would allocate $80 million to build a new modern two-story building and remodel the main gym and V wing. There's, if anyone is so there's basically no doubt in my mind that almost every high schooler is in agreeance that our school is below standards for Minnesota. Anytime we, anytime like high school sports team or like knowledgeable team goes to another high school, we are just like amazed and confused at why their high school is so much better than ours. And our high school, it's just kind of, it's embarrassing. And it doesn't, it's not what we need. It doesn't give us all the facilities we need. It is not, it's old, it feels, it feels kind of oppressive. And it's, it's just, it's just a pain and it's embarrassing. That's, I think, what this board would have heard if we've, if they'd heard it from more students. The District Youth Council was asked about this by Dr. Hellman, and I thank him for doing that. And the District Youth Council, when I was there, it was pretty much unanimous that we need to be spending as much money as we can to improve the high school as the taxpayers would be willing to. And I know it's a hard economic time right now. But there are a lot of people in Northfield who are not feeling pressure, and there are a lot of people who are feeling pressure. But the time is sort of passing, and there are, there are, there are supports that we can give, and the amount isn't really that, that, that's being proposed, a $60 million amount isn't that punishing from what I've seen to really leave things at the state that they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, our final speaker is Rob Hardy.
Hi, my name's Rob Hardy, and this is my first time back at a school board meeting since I left the board two years ago. As a former school board member, I would like to thank Julie Pritchard for her long service on the board, and especially for years as service of services chair of the board. The fact that Julie was chair for most of my eight years on the board was a large part of what made the experience so rewarding for me. Her leadership was exemplary. She was even-handed and open-minded, wise and generous and kind, inclusive and always student-focused. Anyone who wants to know how to be an effective school board member would do well to study Julie Pritchard's example. I know that I myself was better because I had that example. There were a few times when we disagreed on an issue, but there was never a time when I didn't consider her a model of integrity, leadership and public service. This is the school board district's vision statement. We prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. When I read this statement, I realized that Julie embodies all of these qualities, success, critical thinking, curiosity and engagement. It's a wonderful vision. A world with more people like Julie Pritchard would be a much better place. I am truly grateful for Julie's leadership and for all the ways she made me feel valued during my time on the school board. Julie, thank you for being a role model and for your years of exceptional service to the Northfield Public Schools.
Thanks so much. Okay, we're now on to announcements and recognition.
Yes, and I have one announcement this evening. It's a recognition of something that took place last week. As a matter of fact, it was Inclusive Schools Week from December 5th through December 11th. And we want to acknowledge Governor Walz's Inclusive School Weeks proclamation. And so this is what the governor had written. Whereas Minnesota is committed to providing education in schools and classrooms that is welcoming and inclusive for all Minnesota children, and whereas Minnesota educators recognize that each child is unique and learns better if teaching is tailored to their abilities, interests and uniqueness. And whereas the educators and families of Minnesota work hard to ensure that classrooms and schools are both high performing and inclusive. And whereas through these efforts, the educators and families of Minnesota have contributed significantly to building a stronger and more inclusive community based on students' ability and disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference and other factors. And whereas Minnesota families and educators join the schools, districts and communities around the country in celebrating Inclusive Schools Week. And the governor had proclaimed that from December 5th through the 11th. And so, as you know, we endeavor to be a school that is inclusive as outlined in this particular proclamation, and we wanted to share it with the board during announcements and recognitions this evening. So that's what I've got for you.
Thank you. All right. Now it is my honor, along with Rob Hardy's excellent comments, to also give a few words of recognition about Julie and about Tom. When you, often when you ask young students what they would want to be when they grow up, you get some of the same common answers. Teacher, mom, doctor, firefighter, basketball player, influencer. At a much younger age, that list includes superhero. And I think many of us never let go of that desire and aspiration to be a superhero, and so we become teachers, parents, doctors, firefighters and public servants. Julie and Tom, thank you for being superheroes, for sacrificing time and energy, making difficult decisions and for putting others first. Know that you've made a difference. This engaged community has put their trust in you all these years. You have each served well and can be proud of the heart and effort you put into your respective terms. Tom, you stepped up to serve and have done so faithfully. You've served on Northfield Forward Equity Advisory Committee as well as the Human Rights Committee, making an impact on countless district stakeholders. I'm thrilled that you were able to hand your son his diploma in 2021 and that you made him proud for your work on the board. Thank you for your service, Tom. Julie, there is no way I can do justice to you tonight for all that you have contributed through your board work. Thank you for serving as board chair these last seven out of your 12 years. You've taken good care of our district's need, and in my short time, you helped facilitate a renaming policy for our district buildings, retired the antiquated high school mascot, served on the incident command team guiding district, the district on COVID-19 decisions, restarted the Legislative Action Committee to keep district stakeholders engaged with our legislators. Prior to that, Julie was also instrumental in getting the 2017 operating levy renewed and increased plus serving, plus securing voter approval for a new Greenville Park school and repurposing the old building as the district's early childhood center. Julie has served on most of our committees and sat at numerous negotiations, but I wouldn't be surprised if her favorite was District Youth Council. Julie can also be thanked for hiring our fabulous superintendent. I especially thank you for mentoring me. We will all miss your sharp insight on all manner of subjects and powerful comments at our meetings. We appreciate your incredibly generous ways, your strong leadership and your excellent listening skills. Thank you both. We know you won't be strangers to the needs of the district, and we may even see you at public comment soon. I do have a card for each of you, and we have added $25 in chamber bucks to keep up with your investment in our community. Board members, you're welcome to say your goodbyes now, or you can connect with them after the meeting.
So I just want to say a couple of things about Tom first, and then a little more about Julie. I just want to say that I think Tom is very thoughtful and engaged and prepared, and he's passionate about his school board work. And he truly cares about our students, and I've really enjoyed working with you, Tom. Thank you for your service to the district. And Julie, I remember the first time I met you, I was actually behind the podium at a board meeting. I was part of the Northfield Middle School site team, and we were giving a presentation to the board. And I don't remember much about what we said to the board, but what I do remember, my takeaway from that is the lovely thank you note that you sent to me afterwards, thanking me for appearing to the board in a presentation. And that just blew me away that you would send me a thank you note. So and it's only gone up since then. You're an excellent leader. You have a gentle leadership style that brings the board to consensus. You really are very prepared for the meetings. I've always been impressed with how either you have a really good memory or a really good way of keeping track of everything through the years because you always bring up things from the past and relate them to the present. And most importantly, you really make everyone feel like they matter. Whether we're behind the table or behind the podium or in the audience, you make us feel like we matter. So thank you for being such an excellent role model to me and to everyone, and I feel very fortunate to have served on the board with you.
Thank you, Amy. Jeff, would you like to?
Yeah, just being on the board with Rob Hardy for years, I thank him for showing up and I echo his comments for Julie. So you obviously have a way of words. And so I just appreciate that. And I had talked to Julie earlier and she's married to an NHSer that I went to, to school with, and they're both just great valued people in the community. And I just, I just greatly appreciate all the work you've done for the district. And Tom, you're a fighter and very affirmative in your opinions. And I just, I mean, I think that we, what we need in this country is robust discussion on everything. So I just I always love your engagement and passion for ideas that you have, and I just greatly thank you for the time that you've been on the board. So thank you.
Good, Cory.
What else is there to say, really? Following the chair, vice chair, and of course, former board member Hardy, lots of nice things. So just appreciate my two years serving with both of you. We've had a lot of good discussions, a lot of big topics have come before us in the last two years. So thank you for your serving four years and 12 years, I believe, and I wish you luck in the future. Thanks.
Thank you both. Dr. Hellman.
Yes, I've written a few things in the cards that I gave to you, but just to start, Tom, I appreciate you having been a great thought partner. And one of the things I'm so grateful for you is I think you're a model for the dedication to the district and being a well-prepared board member. It was very clear to me at every meeting that you had thoroughly read the packet and you had insightful questions about how something might have an unintended consequence. And you framed it in a way that was intended to move the district forward, and that is what I will miss about your service. And so thank you for your wonderful, wonderful service to the community over the last four years. And it's not often, as many people know, that I am at a loss for words, but when I think about describing Julie Pritchard, I am at a loss for words, but I'll, I'll get through that. Don't worry. I don't remember a time that I've worked at Northfield Schools without Julie Pritchard because Julie was appointed to the board a very short time after I started working here in 2009. So I don't know a Northfield School District without Julie Pritchard. And of course, with the chair who hired me as the superintendent led the process. You and I have been through quite a bit together, a lot of celebrations, a lot of challenges. You know, working through things that were, had heartache involved, and I, every time that we talk, I am a better person and a leader as a result of it. So thank you for the legacy, and I use that word intentionally, that you have left for this school district and the community. And I totally agree with my friend, Dr. Hardy, that you know, you are a model for what school board governance looks like, and you will be missed. So thank you, Julie.
Julie.
Well, I certainly want to thank everyone for their very generous comments and, and really always awesome to see Rob Hardy, and thank you. That was very unexpected surprise and very pleasant surprise. And of course, no one, no one can say things quite like Rob Hardy, but thank you so much for those really beautiful and eloquent words and for everyone speaking so, so kindly about my leadership. But really, it's been an honor of a lifetime to serve this community and you know, it's, yeah, it's, it is, of course, you know, difficult to really capture everything over the past 12 years. But I think what I will take with me and remember most, of course, is obviously the honor that this community has given me to serve in this capacity and for the board who, who supported my leadership. And most importantly, for the administrators and of this district, the staff and the students who inspire me every day to be as dedicated, compassionate, committed and as, as, you know, believe and firmness of their convictions and courage to do the right thing on behalf of students and their families. And so I am grateful for, for the way that they inspired me over the last 12 years. So thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, we are moving on to item five. Items for discussion and reports. First, we have truth and taxation at presentation for the payable 2023 property tax levy and fiscal year 2022, 2023. Director of Finance Val Mertesdorf will present. We will have after the presentation, after the truth and taxation presentation, Northfield School District taxpayers will have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments regarding the truth and taxation public hearing presentation. Roberts Rules of Order is used to govern the conduct of this meeting. And so I welcome them.
Thank you. So this is not the most exciting presentation, and following all of that wonderfulness about Julie and Tom is going to be kind of a bummer, but I'll do the best I can to keep you engaged. So we are talking truth and taxation. We are required to certify our 22 pay 23 levy certification. So just to take you back to talk a little bit about the levy cycle and how that works. In the spring, the Rice County assessors, actually Dakota and Goodhue County assessors determine all of the property estimated market values. They go through an incredibly complex calculation to get the net tax capacity. Minnesota has one of the most complex property tax systems, which I'm sure is not a surprise to anyone here. And then each of the taxing jurisdictions are required in September to set a preliminary tax levy, which is then divided up against the tax capacity, and that calculates your estimated taxes for your property taxes. We are highly regulated by the state of Minnesota. So the vast majority of the formulas, actually, I want to say all of the formulas are in statute, prescribed with how they're calculated, the inputs that we can use, the vast majority, probably 60 or 70% are enrollment driven. So that's a very important component as well. And there's certain ones that have maxes on them set by the Department of Ed. And then we are, in November, they send out the proposed tax notices, and now we finalize that in December. And that will become the final certified amount that goes for the 2023 taxes for our community. So I talked a little bit about this, but not only do they set the formulas and what we are able to or unable to levy for, they set things like the, the 724 per pupil that was changed from voter approved to board authorized. So there's lots of different components, all of which the state have a say in and ultimately are, were responsible to. And there are several things when you get your actual property tax statement in the mail that can impact the number that you see. The school district's taxes are one component of that, but there are also county taxes, city taxes and occasional other taxing jurisdictions. If there's voter approved referendums or changes in enrollment, like I said, about 60 to 70% of our formulas are enrollment driven. We are experiencing declining enrollment, and so typically we're seeing a reduction in those particular calculations. We can have levy adjustments for up to three years after the initial year of certification. Legislative changes, as I've said, are pretty significant. Legislative changes, as I've said, um, are pretty significant impact depending on the year and what the legislature chooses to, um, chooses to pass. Changes in your market value are probably one of the most significant things that we see. And as most people are very aware right now, the increase in market value has been very significant. I, I think the information I have from Rice County is that residential values went up on average 16 to 17%, which is very significant. Um, if your property change from residential homestead, commercial or some other combination that can change it as well. Um, and then certainly the levies by other taxing jurisdictions. We only have control over our levy, um, so that is what I will focus on. So the levy has three different fund components. There's a general fund, our community education fund and debt service. The levy does provide about 25% of our general fund revenue, um, which is a pretty significant portion of that. It does pay our debt service obligations, both border approved and, um, LTFM and those sorts of things. That revenue is solely to pay the debt service obligations in that fund. It also fills the gaps in the chronic underfunding that, um, I will not belabor. You've heard it many times, uh, but we do not, uh, keep pace with inflation on the money we receive from the state. And this has helped fill the gap so that we can continue to provide the, um, high quality learning that our community expects. So the overall levy is up, uh, just over 1.1 million, um, or about 5.63%. This is actually the highest increase we've had in the last five years. And we had no changes between our preliminary and our final, uh, which is not uncommon, but there's occasionally a recalculation or things like that. But it was exactly the same as what I presented in September. This shows a little bit of the breakout. So the referendum, as you can see, the voter approved referendum is 40.9% of our total levy. We are grateful to, um, live and serve in a generous community. And that is all the proof you should need of that. General fund others, about 27.6%. That is primarily all of the state authorized levies. The long-term facility maintenance, operating capital, um, building lease. Those are a handful of the ones included in there. Debt service is about 25.8%. And the capital is the voter approved, um, capital projects levy of 750,000. The voter approved amount that just passed in November is actually going to be in effect for our pay 24 levy. So this amount reflected here is still 750,000. And then community services gets about 2% uh, for some early childhood, um, family education and a few other, um, components that they have. As part of the truth and taxation, we are required to break it out into these specific categories. So you can see the total by fund. So about 15.2 million of the 21 million is for the general fund. About 440,000 for community ed and just over 5.4 million for debt service. The voter approved is 13, almost 13.8 million. Um, I believe the calculation is 65% of our total levy, total levy is voter approved. Again, another way, um, that our community shows support for us. And the other of about 7.3 million is the state authorized levies. That is also the breakout that you will typically see on your property tax statement. So it will typically say school district voter approved and other, that is the breakout for those. And then by tax base, the referendum market value. That is how our, um, voter approved operating referendum is calculated. Um, and that tax capacity is the values that basically all the other formulas are calculated on. So all the same 21.1 million, just a couple of different ways to break those out and look at them. Um, as you can see, the general fund went up about, uh, 6.85%. The primary reason for that is the, um, inflationary increase on the voter approved referendum. So the state sets this calculation per statute, um, and it was actually about a 12% increase this year, which is, um, unusual. Obviously, we're aware that inflation is a significant component this, in this current market. So that did, um, that was about $675,000 of additional revenue for the district related to that inflationary increase. We are still experiencing declining enrollment, but the increase, um, in the per pupil amount, um, because of that inflationary amount actually offset the decrease we're seeing in the student count. So that will certainly be helpful, um, with our budget planning moving forward. And then community ed and debt service are, um, pretty straightforward. The debt service includes an increase for our, um, 2022 long-term facility maintenance bond for the middle school roof. There is an offsetting reduction actually in the general fund for the long-term facility maintenance. So there is, um, it is net neutral for the taxpayers, but that is the primary increase for that, uh, reason for that increase. So this gives you just a little bit more detail, um, and compares the prior year certified levy to this year. So you can see all of the different, um, buckets that are allocated by the state. And you'll see the referendum, 687,000 was the, the largest increase. And again, related directly to that inflationary increase that is set by the state. And then community ed and debt service. So overall, 5.63% increase. Um, if you look historically, um, that is our largest increase in the last five years. Actually, two of the last five years, we had a decrease in the total levy. And so our average increase over the last five years is about 1.9%. So that is the levy. And as part of the truth and taxation, we are also required to talk about the budget. It has worked really well in this timeframe to talk, um, about a revised general fund budget. And so that is what we have done the last, um, several years. Because we have a lot of good information at this point in the year. Um, October 1 enrollment is a, a key number for school districts. And we have that, all of the students are here and we're no longer projecting how many students we might actually have. Our audit is usually complete and it is very, 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 very close to complete, but has not been formally presented here. That will be in a couple of weeks, but we have that final data from the prior year. All of our employment agreements are typically finalized by this point in the year. We have our federal funding allocations from the state. And we have some more information about our, um, self-insurance right now. So those are the biggest components that are playing in, um, and the reason that it works well in this cycle. So enrollment, um, as you've heard me say many times, is very critical for, um, our, our budget. So 70% of our general fund is enrollment based formulas. So last year, you can see what we had for the adopted budget, the revised budget and the actual. Um, so in May of 21, I was projecting that we would have about 4,196.4. And we ended the last, ended last year with 4,259, um, weighted pupil units. The total column is more what you would consider like student bodies, um, in the classroom. The weighted calculation is what they use for the revenue. And for 22, 23, um, I was projecting about 4,156, so a slight decline. And I'm showing that we're going to show a slight increase. Uh, we have a pretty good track record of where we are with our October 1 seat count and how that, uh, projects to the end of the year. So I feel pretty good about this number. I would say the biggest, um, variable in the membership is really our, um, out of school time programming. So our targeted services and extended time, um, we can get some additional ADM to help support students and serve them outside of, um, or after school hours. That is usually our biggest, um, influence on the actual number at the end of the year. So just, um, over 3,800 students, um, just shy of 4,200 for the weighted. So an additional 42 students in terms of revenue calculation, which is helpful. Um, I would always prefer that it go in that direction rather than taking some revenue away that I was expecting. But in terms of the revenue budget, it was pretty, um, pretty consistent. I think it's about a $5,000 increase. So the property tax levy, again, we are, are setting the levy right now for next year. So this is already a set amount when we did the original budget. So that typically does not change. The state sources increased, um, slightly. And again, that is due to the additional student count. Our federal sources actually is a little bit less than originally projected. We spent some more of our federal in, um, the 21, 22 school year than we had originally budgeted. And so, um, that was really our, some of our pandemic funds. And so we're just kind of flip flopping the years in which we're spending those. So that came down a little bit. And then our local sources, um, is pretty similar. Uh, we've seen a pretty good rebound to pre-pandemic levels of activities. You know, participation activities and I would say attendance and some other, a handful of other things that are playing into that. But overall, really similar to what I was expecting. In terms of expenditures, um, I'll show you this in two different ways. So this is by program. So what are the types of expenditures programmatically? Is it for administration, instruction, student support? So you can see the breakout there. A slight increase for expenditures, um, not, not significant, which is good. Uh, we don't want to be crazy off on our budget, which is a good place to be. But we do have a couple of things that, um, after we looked at our audited data. Again, returning to pre-pandemic levels. Um, I think I've talked about how difficult it's been to budget during the pandemic because we weren't sure which model we were going to be in or if we were going to be able to have volunteers or subs or what was going to be happening. And just people's level of caution coming, um, to the building. So sub cost is, um, an area that we saw return, um, to, to pre-pandemic levels. Um, and so that's kind of been increased. And then really that full return to activities and participation and all of those things have been back to normal. Um, we have seen a, a slight uptick in our special ed placements. Um, and then there is also transportation associated with that. So, um, you can see that throughout here, um, and you'll see it in the next, um, breakout as well. And then I would say the most notable, um, so the purchase services is where the transportation lies. Um, so you can see that increase. One of the most notable, um, impacts to this budget was the, um, approval of the health insurance. So supporting our staff, um, and making sure that we could absorb some of that, um, increase that we had with our, that we were supporting with the pandemic dollars. I have budgeted 12 months of the benefit and so you don't see a significant increase in here. But had that changed, that number would have come down, um, significantly. Again, I think that's the right, it was the right move, um, to support our staff, um, during this time. But so you see just about $300,000 more of overall expenditures, um, than what was projected in the spring. So what that looks like when you pull it all together. So the 21, 22 audit results haven't been formally presented here, um, but the numbers are complete. And so we did spend down about $2.9 million, which was anticipated. I think the budget I had proposed was about a $2.5 million spend down. And so we did spend a little bit more than anticipated. But I think the bigger component that plays into this, um, budget is that we actually ended with our unassigned fund balance last year at about 8.9 million. Or 14.19%, uh, so just above the board goal ending for 21, 22. The board's new goal, I should add. We did actually see, uh, less of a decrease in our restricted fund balance than we had anticipated. And so when we're talking about total fund balance, it's either restricted or unassigned. And so when the restricted does not go down as much, um, that means that the unassigned did. And there's a few reasons for that. Some of the capital things and some of the federal things that we, um, saw flow through. But that is where we landed last year. So then we are forecasting and starting with the 14.19. We had originally projected ending last year with about 16% on the dot. And so we are starting a little bit behind this year than we had originally anticipated. So the proposed budget, um, you can see again, the, the net revenue and expense is not that, that much different. We're planning to spend down a one, 1.8, but that would put us, um, are projecting to put us about 12.99% at the end of this year. I am working on an updated financial forecast. Um, we've typically presented that in January. And there are some additional revenue streams, um, the compensatory. Um, we've seen pretty much rebound from to pre-pandemic levels as a result of the, um, MDE's Medicaid pilot. So there, we have some more, um, students qualifying for free and reduced, um, meals. And so that benefits that, um, revenue calculation. And then, um, in addition, the operating referendum, that inflationary increase that is for next year's budget that I just talked about, the 687,000. So hopefully with those things and, um, a relatively positive outlook on the legislative, um, forecast will result in a, a better situation, but that will get presented in January. Um, and we'll see what the next steps are, um, and make a recommendation at that point. But that's the current budget, um, revision. I think that's all I had. So I would, do you want to do the public comment first?
Thank you, Val.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, if there are any Northfield School District taxpayers who want to ask questions or make comments regarding the truth and taxation public hearing presentation. For the, are there any who would like to, um, ask any questions in the Northfield Public School District? Okay, you're welcome to come up now. And, um, you'll be given three minutes per person to comment and ask questions on the proposed property tax levy and budget. Welcome.
I don't know if my comments are that much along.
Come up to the podium. Welcome.
Uh, my name is Dinette Hemersky. And I don't know if my comments, which area they go in, if they were more in the first part of the meeting or, uh, towards the end of the meeting, they're not technical comments, but they do involve both tax and school. So, um, when we moved here in 2011, um, my daughter enrolled in high school and we were promised there was going to be a new house, high school built. And instead, the district built a state of the art middle school. And it's like, who wants to go from a high top middle school to an antiquated high school? I mean, would it have made more sense to build the high school where the middle school was? Put the middle school and high school so that they had some incentive to stay, go to this great high school. Then maybe go on to the colleges and grow the, the whole community. But what it is, you know, it is what it is. But could there be any savings now in revamping this state of the art middle school into a terrific high school? And put the middle school in, you know, ban revamped high school a little bit, put the middle school in there? And save some money, but still have some two very great educational facilities? And then, um, I was wondering too, um, is Northfield School District still sending special needs students out of the district? Cause those families would be more apt to move out of the district and take with them any present and future siblings. So you're looking at decreased enrollment and you're looking at depletion in your tax base. I don't know if any of you made it to the middle school meetings. I made it to one of them and, um, it was really, um, heart wrenching because there were many parents there that, um, all of this technology was too much for their children at the age they were in. And, uh, so they were transported out of the district. And there you look at, you know, dropping enrollment. Well, um, you know, that's where it's at. And advanced technology should be saved for those that are more. those that are more mature and able to handle it. Are we doing a disservice to the health, the uh, mental health and development of the younger students? By throwing all this stuff at them because it's so addictive, you need an older, more mature individual to safely access all this equipment. Now, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I would end, the one question that I heard in there was regarding uh, special education students and sorry. Um, what I would say is that every uh, special education student situation, if we don't, if the school district is not able to serve their I E P needs, we do work with other schools. Um, we did in two thousand and sixteen form a partnership with three other school districts, um, Medford, Owatonna and Faribault, where we come together to provide services for students who are in tier four in the highest level of special needs where no school district on their own could be able to effectively provide those services. That would be where most of our special education students who don't attend our schools go. Once in a while, uh, very rarely, there could be a student that might have a need so unique that we might need to access programming in one of the metro areas. But uh, in terms of sending special education students out, what I would say is that we are all mostly doing that when we're doing it in partnership with other schools. So we are able to maintain some of those dollars and be able to have an influence on
They'll have them in the area.
Program. So that was the one question I heard you ask that I wanted to clarify.
Concerned because I know there was an individual that had like um, an A D A D student, you know, bright and everything, but you know, the continual electronic stimulation is just way over the top for a number of kids. And is that is that something we ought to be looking at as far as maybe toning it down a little and the younger sets and waiting until they're mature? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wanting to come up and make a question about the uh, truth in taxation presentation question or comment? And just come right up to the podium. Yeah. Good, welcome.
Hello, I'm Ruth Aldrich. And um, I just have a few questions. I'm not sure if this is the right place to be asking or not. But my understanding is that Faribault students have been coming to Northfield to go to attend classes here. For various reasons and uh, how, how does that support our school here? If their parents are living in Faribault and not living in Northfield? So as far as other students from other cities coming, how are we covering those expenses? And maybe another question, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but um, who in Northfield is involved with the voting process? Is it only residents in in Northfield? Or does it include the colleges, Saint Olaf and Carlton College? As far as the voting here in town? Um, we're the ones that get to pay the taxes if it happens to be college students that are doing the voting. And um, yeah, I'm just uh, wondering how this is all playing out. Thank you.
I'd be happy to uh, address both of those questions. And Val, just have you help me a little bit. So first on the first question about the students coming from Faribault. Minnesota has something that's called the open enrollment law, and that allow allow us families to select any school district that they would like to attend. And so uh, it is very common in Minnesota that uh, there are students from a resident school district that go to other school districts. And for students from other school districts that attend their district. And you're right, in uh, Northfield here, we get around three. In fact, our latest report shows that uh, this year we had three hundred and two students from Faribault uh, this fall choose Northfield Public Schools. And uh, there were currently, um, actually this year, we only have one Northfield student who has chosen Faribault. And so uh, we have a full enrollment options report that we just presented, uh, I believe in October uh, that we could certainly get for you. But the students uh, state aid dollars follow the students. So a Faribault student that choose, where their parents choose Northfield, we get that state aid. Val, do you want to talk just a little bit about how that state aid follows the students in open enrollment? She can answer that. And then we'll come back to the voting question.
Sure. Um, so the um, we get both the state aid and actually the um, the local voter approved operating referendum, all the components of the revenue. Um, on my presentation, the the number of students that I showed, if they are open enrolled here, they're included in that. And so they would be included in all of our revenue calculations. On the flip side, we have about um, I want to say four hundred and sixty or so, four hundred and sixty-four students who live in Northfield, in the Northfield School District boundary, but choose another district. Um, whether it's a charter school or Randolph or anywhere else that they choose to do. So um, the actually, the students that choose to open enrolls to Northfield actually help offset that loss um, in students that we would see. So there is kind of a balance there, but we do get um, all of the revenue, um, both state aid and um, really any enrollment formula that we have authorized, um, if they're enrolled here. Does that help answer it?
So in other words, with students going to other states or other school districts does not um, we, we get an offset of that as as Northfielders um, for offsetting the costs of those students moving around.
So as a Northfield resident, you are paying for any student that is attending Northfield Public Schools regardless of where they came from. But what I was trying to say is we have um, four hundred, oh, it's, I had totally read it wrong. Four hundred and sixty-four students that come to Northfield Public Schools from somewhere else that don't live here. Um, that their, you know, guardians don't pay taxes here. But we actually have about eight hundred and thirty-nine students that live here and pay taxes, but don't, their students don't attend Northfield Public Schools. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So there, there is a, an offset in that regard. But um, at the end of the day, you're paying for the students that are actually attending here.
And we do lose, the the revenue for the students who choose something different follows them. So if there's a Northfield School District resident student who chooses, for example, Arcadia Charter School or Prairie Creek Charter School, those schools get the state aid for that. A student from Northfield who chooses Farmington, Farmington gets the state aid for that. So the the funding follows the student. And then on your question around uh, the voting component. So uh, voting is governed by the state law. And so Minnesota has same-day voter registration. So your question was specific to college students voting in town. And across the entire state of Minnesota, I think on any college campus, there are some students who absentee vote back to their home. They're allowed to to do that should they choose. They can only vote in one place, obviously, but they could absentee back to their their, or I suppose drive home and uh, do early voting or vote on election day. But those college students, because their residence is here right now, they also are able to uh, register to vote in the town where they go to college. So uh, students in Mankato and Northfield and Minneapolis and Duluth. Um, I, I am sure, and I know here in Northfield that there are students who are uh, attending the colleges who do register to vote here. They can only register vote in one place. Um, but those college students do have that option that they can choose to either vote in their home district, if that's where they maintain that, or they can certainly do same-day or uh, voter registration in the town where their college is located and can vote there. And that is all governed by state statute.
Is there any way of knowing the percentage of students that actually do participate in Northfield voting?
Uh, I do not know the answer to that. I think that might be something you'd have to ask the colleges.
Okay. Seemed like there was one more question I was going to ask, but it, it's gone now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to make a comment or have a question? Okay, um, seeing no one else is coming forward, we can now move on to questions and comments from the board members. Board members, anybody have a question or a comment? Amy?
Thank you, Val. Once again, you have taken a lot of information and managed to synthesize it in such a way to make it understandable. And I really appreciate that. Um, there was one part I didn't understand though, and I'm hoping you could just give me a little more information. And that's on the page twenty-three levy analysis.
Okay.
Uh, at the very bottom, it was subtitles by tax. And I guess I don't understand the difference between the referendum market value and the net tax capacity is. If you could just explain that difference.
Sure. So the referendum market value, um, I'll try and make sure I don't get these backwards. When we do a referendum um, for agricultural property, you, they're paying on um, their house in one acre, I believe, is the calculation. So that market value only includes the house in one acre of a agricultural property. The net tax capacity would include their entire property, so all of their acres, regardless of whether it's homestead or just for agricultural use. And so um, and then there's other things that are probably included or excluded from that, but that's the typical. Um, that's the big one, I think, that makes the big difference for the particular calculations. And so what this is saying is eleven point four million dollars of our twenty-one million dollars was spread on that referendum market value. Um, so eleven million dollars went to the house in one acre of egg property, as well as residential, commercial, and whatever that breakout was. But then nine point six million of our levy was spread on the rest of the calculation. So there's two different market value calculations effectively. Um, and our referendum gets calculated on the referendum. And um, almost all the other ones get calculated on net tax capacity. Is that helpful?
I'm almost there.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, but you've added them together. So, so that would be, the net tax capacity would be any uh, farm land beyond that house and one acre.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't include any commercial property or anything.
Yep, so it includes all the same buckets as the referendum market value. But the the biggest differential is the egg property um, between referendum and net tax capacity. So as a, as a residential homeowner, you're included in both calculations. Okay? So that's your, our net tax capacity and our referendum market value, your value of your property is included in both of those. But for egg property, only their house in one acre, the value of that is included in the referendum market value. And all of their properties included in the net tax capacity.
Okay, and, and so different levies are against different, one or the other. I got it. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, anyone else comment or question? Corey?
One question concerning the expenditure revision by object. Uh, spreadsheet? Looks like supplies are up twenty-five percent from the proposed budget to the revised budget. Just curious what would account for that? Went from one point nine million to almost two point five. Those weren't the security cameras, were they?
So that is, um, I think I made a note in my narrative, but I probably didn't say it out loud. Um, so we had a pretty significant shift but from capital outlay. Um, and that was really a coding change from the Department of Ed. So we are required to code everything in our finance system according to U F R S, which is the Uniform Financial and Accounting Reporting Standards, I believe. And so they um, have the last several years actually been kind of um, adding codes to, to provide more specificity and comparison from district to district. Um, but they really took a deep dive into technology. So um, they really broke out what was considered um, capitalizable. So a five hundred code, which is the capital outlay. Um, that's the five hundred code. Sorry, you don't know what that means. Um, is equipment in nature. But so typically, we would have coded um, laptops and iPads and any, any equipment monitors, any equipment. But now they have it broken out so that if it's not capitalizable, there's tech instructional technology equipment, non-instructional technology equipment. So it's really just a flip flop from capital to supplies. Um, that was a really long, complicated explanation for that short little actual answer, but gives you a little more context. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Tom.
Thanks for the report. On expenditure review, revision by program, the site and buildings was up um, like eight hundred thousand. Is that because of like heating or?
Yep, some of that is related to utilities. Uh, we've continued to see that increase. Um, not, not as significantly as we saw it jump in uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, but there was still um, an increase related to that. My guess would be that some of the capital outlay um, was flipped in there as well. So most of our capital outlay is coded to the sites and buildings as, as a project base. Um, and when we're pulling that out for the capital outlay, if it's um, because of the way the state changed the coding, it's I'm guessing it was just flip flopped up there, just like the other one.
And if Northfield were to grow by, say, a thousand houses, would that um, impact my taxes now? I mean, would, would that impact taxes for everybody? And how, and how would that, would it lower their taxes or raise it if we get more housing in town?
Well, that's a complex question. Um, so I'll answer it in in two ways that will hopefully get to what you're looking for. So if we added a thousand houses with no students, just residential homestead, um, that would increase our market value and the district's levy, which is a set dollar amount, so twenty-one million would be spread over an extra thousand houses. So yes, your taxes would come down. However, um, I would say it's pretty uncommon for a thousand houses to be built without any students uh, attending our schools. So that would then increase any of our enrollment formulas, which then would increase our overall levy. So there's a balance. Um, and it would be very dependent on how many students enrolled versus how much was the increase in the market value. Um, but those two components would kind of play off of each other for the answer to your question. Is that helpful?
Um, yeah. Um, and so say there were students involved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they came to the school, they would also bring in funding per student, right?
Yep. We would get both the state component, which is about sixty-seven, sixty-eight hundred right now. I should know that number by heart. Uh, so I apologize, I don't have it right off the top of my head. But then we would also get the voter-approved operating referendum as well, which is around eighteen hundred per student.
So I guess the, 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 the upshot or the final thing is, does it pay for the town to grow? And if the town or or not like this?
I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that question. Um, I mean, our demographic study says for every residential homestead, we get point six students. Um, so from the district's perspective, every student, every A D M helps support the revenue. And so, yes, in that regard, additional students is helpful for the district's budget. Um, and obviously, we're always grateful to serve more students and have that opportunity. But I, I am not um, an expert in tax capacity and how that would. Um, I'm sure there's a break even analysis that somebody can do, but that somebody is probably much smarter than I am. Um, so I, I don't know how much it would take to increase um, our, our tax base enough to offset an increase in student count, if that makes sense. Um, and it would also depend on if we got more students than what we're seeing decline. There's a, quite a few variables um, in that question. I can tell you, um, I did actually get this from Rice County. So I, I asked of the increase that we're seeing in our tax capacity, how much of it is just from market value increase and how much was from actual new construction? Um, and so just shy of forty-four million dollars was new construction. Um, which increases obviously the overall tax base. And that was about ten million more than the year prior. So if um, I didn't talk about the tax impact document either. Um, so I'll take the opportunity to do that now. But if your um, if the value of your property stayed the same, which I promise it probably did not. Um, your school district taxes would have gone down about seven percent. So, and that is because we saw some So, and that is because we saw some increased growth, increased market value. Um, but that's obviously not the case. The average homeowner saw a sixteen seventeen percent increase in their property value. So all of those things go together in that calculation, but, um, to answer your very specific question, um, I would say I'm definitely not qualified to, to give you a specific answer to whether or not we should grow as a community.
Well, the, they, and that relates to, we are going to grow, uh, you know, starting the summer there. The construction out by the hospital is going to begin and, um, that could grow substantially. So I was just curious if that would be to our benefit or not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I think I'll add that of course, um, having additional homes would be helpful to us, right? Because we've been talking about declining enrollment. We know that we have people who want to come to the district who can't find housing. But it's also about what kinds of housing are available. That's another issue that we have is around what's the right home for me at a particular stage of life? So, um, the latest report I got from one of our local realtors, Pete Mergans, gives me an update every so often. We had even less inventory in his last report than he, we did when he gave me a report in July. So the last report he gave me about a month ago or so was around thirty homes for sale total in the school district. And again, the average sale price or the average listing price at or above a half a million dollars. So when we are thinking about young families who would grow our school system, uh, slow the tide of declining enrollment, it also goes to what is the kind of homes that are being built as Val talked about with, you know, point six in a, in a single family home. So I just want to emphasize that, that, you know, of course, new homes would be a good thing to stem the declining enrollment that we've had. But I think Val's question or answer, your question was also about the broader tax impact that that might have on property owners.
Thank you. You have a follow up, Tom?
Um, yeah, so, uh, the, um, the information that was public about the development by the, the hospital looks like a mix, uh, you know, from apartments duplexes, triplexes um, attached and detached homes. So, um, between that and the Craywood and the construction out by the middle school, um, the housing will, hopefully that situation will, will improve, which
We're excited about. That's a good thing.
Do you have any more comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Val. Excellent. Appreciate you. Okay, Dr. Hillman, we're on to your superintendent operations and strategic plan update.
Yes, I just have three components of the update for you this evening. The first is, um, I want to share with you that we have launched our district strategic plan dashboard. So when the board adopted, uh, the strategic plan in twenty twenty one, we took that extra step of not only having a vision and having strategic commitments, all very common in a strategic plan. But we also, um, adopted benchmarks and these benchmarks, the eleven benchmarks that we determined were, uh, guidelines that we felt could help us report to the community about our success as a school district in a variety of different ways toward achieving our vision. And so, uh, in the handout I gave you, I have a screenshot of, of the benchmarks. And so what you're able to do is if you go to northfieldschools.org forward slash uh, strategic hyphen plan, you'll be able to see at the bottom, each benchmark is a, an accordion folder, if you will. So you'll see the name of the benchmarks. So for example, all children are already for kindergarten. When you click on, uh, the accordion, it expands and it gives you, depending on the benchmark, it gives you, uh, between one and three data points about how we are progressing, uh, on that particular benchmark. And then we also include, uh, at least one, if not more than one data source. And so our intent is to update this for sure annually, uh, and often in many cases, potentially even more than that. And so this was a, an area of focus that I had shared with you this summer because we want to be transparent and share with the community uh, our progress. And so I hope that you'll take a look at it. I also want to emphasize that we're aligning those first seven benchmarks with, uh, Northfield Promise. Again, trying to have all of the organizations in our community who are trying to support children, working in the same direction. And so in fact, uh, Tim is bringing it up right now. So Tim's going to scroll down. Keep going, keep going, keep going. It's all the way at the bottom. So you'll see those are the benchmarks. So just go ahead and click on the, uh, one of those, if you want to start. So you'll see that you can open that. And then you have that data. And so some of you know, my original vision was to have the blocks, the building blocks that we have and have someone click it and then it would, you'll flip that card over, if you will. One of the things that we learned, uh, and have continued to learn is about making sure that as we make our website accessible to screen readers, that sometimes those kind of interactive pieces are more tricky, uh, for a screen reader to be able to communicate to someone who has a visual impairment. So, uh, working with our partners at Newger, this was the choice that we made, uh, to be able to do. We think it's attractive. We think it gives the data uh, and it's accessible as well. So thanks, Tim, for bringing that up, just so people can see that. And again, we'll update this, um, as regularly as appropriate. And, uh, we just appreciate the fact that we adopted a strategic plan that requires us to do that kind of reporting to the community. Another area that we have talked about for some time is what is the role and what is the right place for uh, the right approach to career technical education, uh, in Northfield. As you know, we've worked with Northfield Promise to do some innovative things like, uh, the career technical fair for our middle school students. That several other school districts have come to see how that does to be able to spur student interest in a career and technical field, specifically the trades. And as we look at how do we adopt a career technical education, uh, program or update or modernize our career technical education program for Northfield, we know that our industry and our local, uh, career and technical trades are different than other places. And so what I want to share is that we are, uh, kicking off, uh, an initial task force. That task force's first meeting will be on December twentieth. Uh, we've invited over twenty people from the community to participate in the task force. Uh, there are people who represent, there, there, there are some school personnel, there are business owners, uh, um, folks who work in the community and some other technical, uh, areas. So we've got representatives coming from the agriculture community, from the automotive, uh, industry, from aviation with Stanton Airport not too far from here and Northfield being a destination place for a lot of pilots and also air traffic controllers. We know that that's a technical field that is in this area. Uh, catering, uh, construction, uh, and electrician, emergency management, working with, uh, both the hospital um, and law enforcement, uh, to be able to have those, uh, career pathways represented. Healthcare, uh, media production in our really wonderful partnership with, uh, KYM and Radio in Northfield Live. Um, and again, I mentioned law enforcement segments of our community. So, uh, we are going to work, uh, with those twenty stakeholders to take our vision, to take our strategic commitments, to look at our current offerings. We're going to start with the high school. Specifically about what are those things that are offered the high school? Because those are the students that are closest to entering the workforce. As we assign and identify what the appropriate coursework, sequence of coursework, things to offer, thinking innovatively, are there different ways that we can offer credit than maybe what we have always traditionally done in a traditional classroom environment? Are there innovative credit for learning, uh, pathways that we could achieve? Uh, we will then work backwards to the middle school and into the, uh, elementary schools to determine what are those foundational skills? If I'm in kindergarten today, um, Claudia, uh, in her, um, testament to Tom and to Julie, used a term called influencer. Now, when Julie Pritchard started on the board, that term influencer was not something that people would have considered, or was it really these first starting is what a career pathway would be? That's a very lucrative field right now. So we think about just the timeframe from the kids who are seniors this year. If we go back to when they were kindergartners, the kinds of career technical opportunities that are available. Thinking about the elementaries in a little bit different way, thinking about the middle schools in a different way, about what are those problem solving skills that kids need? And then having the high school program be able to be reinvented regularly to meet the needs of what does industry require? So we're, we're going to meet three times. We're going to start with a plan. And then I do plan on recommending that we make a community, a career technical education advisory committee added to the rest of our committees down the line, because this is not just going to be a three times and we get some great ideas and move forward. It's going to need some, to be something that is maintained, um, as we move ahead. So, uh, so far I have commitment from eighteen of the twenty some people that we have, uh, requested and we're very grateful for people to step forward and look at that. Finally, uh, I do want to mention, uh, something that came out last week that I was pretty glued to it. I'm sure many people at this table were as well. If not, I hope you were, uh, looking at the state November financial forecast. Something that was really important coming out last week. So the Minnesota's Management and Budget Office released the November twenty two uh, state financial forecast. It projects a budget surplus of seventeen point six billion dollars. Billion with a B, right? I've, I've gotten a lot of mileage out of that, but last year we were saying nine billion dollars and now we are at seventeen point six billion dollars. Now, uh, talking with our Minnesota Association of School Administrators lobbyists last week, uh, and then if you, um, I encourage people to watch Almanac from last Friday night. They had the state, uh, budget director, or one of the state budget directors on. They also had a couple of, um, people who really analyzed the capital, around twelve billion of that seventeen point six billion is one time dollars. So that is, uh, from a variety of things, but it is something that is not part of the ongoing budget forecast, but nearly six million dollars of it is ongoing. And of course, we know when the legislature talks about funding schools, they rightfully are concerned about what they call the tail. So when we commit to something now, what does that mean it's going to cost two years from now, four years from now, et cetera. But, uh, my understanding is that six billion dollar surplus that is around six billion dollars that is ongoing is the most that we've had in some time. So we'll be, uh, reactivating our legislative action committee and looking at some of the structural pieces that we will advocate at the legislature, uh, specifically around the per pupil basic funding formula. Just can't miss the opportunity to say if they had just linked the formula to inflation, we would have sixteen hundred dollars more per student today than we had, uh, than we have right now, just to equal the same buying power that we had in nineteen ninety and ninety one. So over the last thirty years, we've had just a handful of times where the increase to the per pupil basic formula has matched inflation. Um, and if you remember the last time, two point four or five percent, that was one of the biggest per pupil formula increases that we had in some time at a time when inflation was double and triple that. So we do have an opportunity for some real structural change. Um, something that's very heartwarming to me, as you've heard me rail several times against the omnibus bill approach, where we wait until the end of the session to be able to decide anything. We get to the last few days. It's a few people in a room finishing. Um, I'm very heartened to hear several legislative observers say that there, they think there is a real chance for a bill right out of the gate, a funding bill right out of the gate. People are specifically, um, hypothesizing that the deal that was on the special education cross subsidy reduction that was at the end of last session may very well be resurrected and brought right away. If you remember, if that bill had been passed, that would have increased our revenue by one point seven million dollars. Coincidentally, that's a little bit more than what our budget deficit is this year, right, Val? Pretty close. So um, if I, we really need the public to pay attention to this and we really need people to advocate with their legislature. Um, I understand that there are certain parts that may have to wait until the end, but if we can get something passed out of the gate, that will really help all school districts in Minnesota as we address the budget deficits that people see, um, and especially here with our declining enrollment, et cetera. Special education cross subsidy in our district being around five million dollars a year, getting one point seven, uh, million dollars toward that would be very helpful. So a lot of times we watch the legislature start, we kind of get, but we need to be ready to go right out of the gate to make sure that people know that our needs need to be met. So we'll be activating our legislative action committee, who was well known at the Capitol last year. And, uh, we plan to bring forward some, some areas that we would ask you to adopt as talking points for our district, uh, in January. So, um, I mean, you know, as always, a two line piece in my operations update can turn into something more than that because it's about the legislature. So we um, we're very excited to see what potentially can happen in January. So that is, uh, the report that I have and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. Are there any questions or comments on the superintendent update? Julie?
Was always, it's a really incredible update, but very exciting about the career Ted, uh, a career, um, tech ed task force. That will be, it sounds like a really, uh, great swath of different opportunities and, and people with a different frame of reference and on helping us to, to figure out where, um, what's the best, um, approach. And I just really appreciate the work you're doing on that, because I, I think it will really serve our students well. So thank you. And our community, right, with, with potential, um, with the, those who, who are able to use their job skills and, and hopefully, um, stay in, in Northfield, um, once they graduate. So thank you. Really excellent work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I am going to, um, ask for a comfort break. So recess of ten minutes. Can I get a second on that? Second by Amy. Um, and I think I take a vote on that. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're in recess for ten minutes. Now, okay, thank you. We're back now from our recess. Thank you so much. We are on, on item six, the consent agenda. As a reminder, there was some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, moved by Amy. Second. Cory? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good motion carries. Thank you. Right. Items for individual action. We have eight items tonight. In our, um, for our last regular meeting of twenty twenty two. First, we have the Northfield High School Facility Improvement Plan. The is requested to provide administrators with the direction for the referendum structure and, um, preliminary election timeline. Um, after much reflection on our community's past vote on a new high school consultation with stakeholders, school construction experts, finance experts, and conducting a database phone survey, we have before us a highly detailed recommendation. Um, I know that you've each studied it. There will be two votes tonight, one on the ballot questions and one on the timing. First, a motion and then discussion on the ballot questions. Is there a motion to approve the high school facility improvement plan? Julie?
So I, I want to thank, um, Claudia, thanks for those opening remarks and really recapping where we've been. And um, so you, you did really an excellent job of recapping, you know, how the, the board discussion and um, really understanding the needs of the high school, the tax implications of each of the proposals and most recently, the impact of the current rates of inflation and supply chain issues and, um, interest rates. And so that, all of that discussion, um, brought us to a place, um, where we were reviewing a sixty million dollar um, question along with fieldhouse and potential turf. Um, so I appreciate the work that Dr. Hillman and Claudia and, and Val did to, to really, um, get the board, um, launched into good discussion. And, and I think that we are at a point where we do need to move forward with, with a vote. And I've been thinking about the vote and I've been thinking about the questions. And, um, I would like to propose a motion with a slightly different approach, um, one that I think, um, would, would best set us up for success. And I think really ultimately reflects good stewardship and provides, um, our district voters' choice to determine how they can support improvements to the high school. And I think the, the passage of the, the three questions that I propose are, um, within the framework of how we've been having discussion, but also, um, reflect the tax tolerance identified in the voter survey results. So, um, I would make a motion to direct administration to prepare a three question bond referenda that would address the needs of the high school in order of priority. Question one, forty million dollar twenty five year bond for infrastructure maintenance to the high school. I think prioritizing the most pressing needs of the facility reflects good stewardship. The question, this question, question one, if approved, would be tax neutral for district taxpayers. That would include functional updates to the HVAC systems, windows and lighting. Question two would be, um, would require passage of question one, but would be a twenty million twenty five year bond to update the academic and other spaces in the school. Renovations could include improvements to modern, modernized career and tech education spaces, science labs, regular and special education classrooms, and could also include renovation of the cafeteria and other common spaces. Question three would be between seventeen and eighteen, eighteen, eighteen and a half million for a twenty five year bond for a fieldhouse and then the addition, additional one point seven million to cover the costs of the storm shelter. This fieldhouse would provide increased space for physical, physical education classes as well as areas that can be utilized by the district's broader community. Passage of this question would require pass, passage of both question one and two. So just to recap, my motion then would be a three question bond referendum. Question one, forty million. Question two, twenty million. Question three, between seventeen and eighteen point Question three, between seventeen and eighteen point five million, all twenty-five-year bonds.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a, um, is there a second on this amended motion? Second by Corey. Okay, so, um, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to open up for discussion and then we will take a vote. Anybody like to make a comment?
I, I just kind of, um, necessarily, I actually, I don't like the way that the questions are set up and I've talked to Julie about this before. Um, is that I'm, I'm more interested in the win than the what? In other words, the, the time of the election, the, the, uh, and, and obviously I'm, I'm on the page of twenty twenty-four, um, not a special election. Um, so basically what it does when you ask it that way, because, I mean, I have to vote no.
Well, Jeff, we are going to have a second, um, place to vote on the timing and this is just on the question.
But I don't necessarily agree with it. I mean, my, my phrase would be, you know, I agree with that if it's contingent upon the twenty twenty-four election. So why would I want to say yes to that? I can't say yes to that because it's, I don't know what the other end of that's going to be. Does that logic make sense to you? See, I, I wouldn't have questioned it that way, but I mean, I think, and I appreciate you changing that, that motion of what that is. And you got a second, so you got to vote on this. I mean, I'll, I'll be a no on this, but, um, you know, anyway, I appreciate that, that. Because I actually do personally think if there is an ask, that the motion that she just put out there is probably the one that's the most reasonable in my mind. And obviously everyone else got an opinion, so that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Jeff. Um, there is, um, definitely needs at the high school. And so I, you know, just encourage you to vote based on the needs that are presented and then consider the timing, um, as we've laid it out, the second question. Any other comments or questions? Amy?
So I've been thinking a lot about this, as we all have, been thinking a lot about this. And, um, I, I think timing is the key in life to so many things. And timing is definitely really important with this question. And right now I'm thinking the timing isn't right to be making this decision because there are a lot of variables out there. Uh, there's the state surplus, budget surplus, maybe something will affect our decisions that way. There are various developments happening in town. There are, you know, the economy is in flux and I'm just not feeling like we are really ready to be able to set such a specific course for a decision. Now, I was really hoping that we'd be able to vote on this while Julie and Tom are still here because they've been so involved in this conversation. But, um, I've gotten to the point where I think it's more important to delay and just wait three months and sort of see how things settle out because I think things can change a lot in three months. And so I am going to be voting no on going forward with anything this specific, whatever the question might be.
Thank you, Amy.
And I agree with, um, Amy. Um, they're, they're, well, I, I don't like Julie's, uh, path anyway because it, um, it, it could leave us with just, you know, a new HVAC in a, uh, uh, school, um, you know, still stuck in the nineteen sixties. Um, there are, as, as Amy says, a lot of things, uh, in flux. Um, and I would maybe even wait longer than three months. And if there's, like Jeff is suggesting, um, waiting till twenty twenty-four and if Cole is right that there are no thing, if, I mean, something could break as we're sitting here in the meeting and that would need attention. And, you know, you deal with that, just like if we waited another year, um, or, or till twenty twenty-four. And, and just fix the, the problems that come up, but, um, well, I mean, you, you all know how strong I feel about this. Um, I think we could maybe take, take more time, get more, again, get more public feedback, like the two thousand sixteen public, uh, the, uh, public comments and the, uh, the, um, what was it called where you got your five hundred and eighty comments or whatever?
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange, yes, thought exchange.
Yes.
Yeah.
Forgot about that one.
If we did that, because it's, you know, five years and, you know, it's an eighty-six year, eighty million dollar ask and there's nobody here. Um, uh, concerned about it or, or even knowledgeable of what, what's happening that, um, you know, I'd, I would really like to see a nice, modern, um, high school here. And I, I see the, I, I see the benefit for the community, for the kids, you know, especially the kids, um, for that. And, um, but, but if people don't know about it, uh, I, I mean, I, I think it's unfair then to, to maybe ask them. And, uh, it, well, I guess it'd be nice to get more feedback and to push this off, um, for a longer period.
Thank you, Tom. Corey?
So I usually kind of just talk up, talk my mind. I did write a few things down, but I'll probably veer off that a little bit. But I want to make sure I was clear on my opinion tonight. And I see the board is going to probably be a split vote tonight, but I still have conviction about the path we have in forward in front of us for multiple reasons. So before us is a plan that's been in the works for a year and really in consideration since twenty seventeen, when the last question on the high school failed. A lot has changed in that time, especially with the uncertainty of our economy and our enrollment. I am comfortable with this recommendation. I believe it's a plan that can be supported by the community, which I think is key, both in project scope and in tax impact for our school district residents. It's imperative for us to move forward tonight with a decision that supports our commitment to stewardship of our buildings. And we know there are needs at the high school that must be addressed. We're all paraphrasing what Cole said. I would invite him to come up and talk about the needs. I've seen a couple of people say that tonight, so I would love for you to come join us if you're able. Um, that's me veering off. Uh, with the structure of this recommendation, the community truly gets to decide what they're willing to support. It is the board's responsibility to put a plan forward. It is the community's responsibility to tell us if they support it. That's democracy. I've said to people many times in my adult life, since I've been a journalist and school member, government is a participation sport, participation sport. I am saddened that there are not more people here. But this came to the board on February twenty-eighth. We've talked about it for nearly ten months. We spent hours and hours and hours in meeting after meeting after meeting discussing this. Kicking it down the can is not going to make it cheaper. The economy is in flux. There's a lot of conjecture going on. We don't know what's going to happen to the budget surplus. We don't know what's going to happen with enrollment. We have needs that need to be addressed now. We had needs that need to be addressed five years ago and what have we done since then? It is time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just frame that, um, we continue to be proud to serve you. We, as an administration, are your agents. Uh, it is our job to be able to give you as much information as we can and what we think are things that are essential for you to consider moving forward. Um, I, I, I understand the desire for more and I, I hope that you feel that your administrative team has left no stone unturned, um, in terms of, over the last year, in terms of securing feedback. There's always, there'll, I've learned there's always one more layer of feedback, right, that you can get. So that's totally, there's nothing wrong with that, right? Uh, our, our pragmatic recommendation, my pragmatic recommendation was based upon what are those most urgent needs that we need to, not emergency, right? Because as I have told several people, Cole tells me he's not losing sleep at night right now, but he sees himself losing sleep about some of the internal behind the high, the walls, high school systems a year from now. And if we know how the process works, you know, if, if you approve something, even in a special election this spring, you still have several months for design, you bid, right? And so the reality of implementing all of these changes in a remodeling manner are several years. This is, this, what you even have before you is a three-year project, right? Because we only can do those things in the summer. Uh, we have a history of working with Walden Canute's in construction where we have had excellent bid days with a variety of different tools that they have used to be able to get real quality bids. So we've tried to, to give you what we think is the most pragmatic piece at this point that balances the things that we want to do, the good things that we want to do for kids by making some structural improvements to the building that would improve the climate and the climate and the, um, temperature and all of the, the light and all of those kinds of things in the building and balancing that against what we do think that the data tells us the community can support. So we are always proud to serve you because this is such a thoughtful and respectful exchange of ideas. But we want to bring forward to you, I'm, I'm going to share one story and then I'm going to ask, as we said, I, I think Cole will say, we're not emergency, but we could be a year from now, right? So there is, we did have, and I'm going to ask Cole the fault, we, we did have, I want to just share with you where we are at right now. We had a fastener, uh, that broke on a piece of HVAC, uh, equipment at the high school. And Cole and his team are, uh, really creative in how they get these parts. Because most of these parts for the oldest part of the building, um, are things that we have to buy used or through other suppliers. Cole just shared with me today, they got a part from a place in Alexandria a while ago. But in this case, they couldn't find this fastener that is, the system doesn't run without it. And so as a last ditch effort, thankfully, we approved the purchase of a CNC plasma cutter last year. And through the very creative efforts of Steve Taggart, our industrial technology teacher at the high school, he created that part in CAD, used that plasma cutter to cut the part back in business. So that is the kind of thing that as people at this table, we don't know, right? I mean, we do the best we can. We're trying to source the parts where we can. Um, but it does become more and more difficult, which is behind the pragmatism of our recommendation. I'd like Cole just to share a little bit more about his assessment because people have asked about it.
Yeah, I think that everything was pretty, you know, we've talked about, you know, the high school, um, a fair amount and from Matt's, um, you know, description of that was the boiler stack is what we were running into. And obviously we're in the heating season and we need the boilers to be running. So, um, that was just one, you know, analysis. We've kept a lot of the older parts from, from the, uh, high school main office remodel this past summer. We keep all of the parts that we take off of the older equipment, um, in case that we need to repurpose them for, um, some of the existing equipment that we have. So that's where that urgency comes from, where, you know, I, I'll go to, go home tonight and, and sleep just fine. Uh, but, um, there are some of those things that come up on a daily basis. So again, that's kind of the general theme with the building, you know, it's, it's getting by. We've heard, you know, different feedback around the comfort and everything, no different than, than past years, as we said into the, into the winter season. But that's some of the feedback that we've gotten and, and kind of some of the reality that, you know, we deal with on a day-to-day operation, so.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, I have a question is, it, and am I recalling that, um, the, the, the infrastructure maintenance that, uh, within the, within a year, it was around ten million of infrastructure maintenance that needed to be addressed? An overall of twenty-eight point seven million at the time that?
Yeah, the, the overall, um, for all the maintenance was around that, I think it was thirty-nine million, if I'm not mistaken, um, for the overall maintenance and that was, um, priority, uh, one through four. Uh, the first priority, yes, I'd have to go back and look at, um, that facility assessment, but I do believe it was in that six to seven million dollar, um, range and I can work on getting that up here.
Thank you. Yeah, I apologize, I don't have that. Recap.
Back to sales.
Are you looking something up, Cole?
Yeah, I was just going to look up that, but we can keep moving forward.
No, no, we, we can wait, it's fine.
Put me on the spot.
Good question.
So, so if, you know, we have these, this infrastructure needs that are, you know, several million. So within a year to two years and we know that the timeline, how does the district address millions of dollars of infrastructure maintenance if we don't have the resources, which we don't?
Right.
We do not have the resources to do that. And my concern is that it's, I recall being quoted, or hearing the quote, "We're living on borrowed time" on a number of these infrastructure needs and delaying what we know is there in terms of needed, um, maintenance does not seem like good stewardship to me.
I agree.
Just, uh, the priority one from the, uh, facility maintenance needs was, um, just shy of one point five million priority two. And that was the immediate need, um, side from zero. Immediate need is one, just under one point five million. The priority two, which is zero to two years, is at seventeen point three.
Seventeen point three million within the next.
Yep, in those priority, zero to two years.
Okay. So seventeen million dollars is a lot more than we have in LTFM or capital projects or any other budget that we could possibly tap to do those essential maintenance. So of the seventeen and a half million, is there a, is there a project that's a big chunk of that? And I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot and asking you, but I just want to get a sense for the scope, seventeen million dollars, what that is? And if we aren't able to do that, what the consequences of that?
Yep. Here, I know a lot of it was the original mechanical equipment. There's a fair amount from the nineteen sixties, the original build. Um, that'd be more on the athletic side, uh, music area, weight room, uh, gym, um, piece. Uh, that wouldn't include any of the stuff that was done in the oh-two, I believe it was. They did some pretty large mechanical renovations, um, then, so that's a large part of it. And then we look at building, I vote some of the window pieces, obviously those are single pane original to the building. And then there are, is one or two, um, specific roofs that are, um, older in age. Um, that would include most of that as well.
Is there some HVAC there then? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, the HVAC would be, yep, on the, kind of those gymnasium, the original, the original area, places that don't have cooling currently. Um, those are the original, um, original equipment to the building and then a lot of the infrastructure, um, with that kind of the brains per se, the mechanical, the building automation systems, um, are, are the original things that need to be updated, pneumatic controls, um, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And Cole, are those, um, kinds of, um, items that you're talking about, this mechanical equipment, the windows, which I, um, understand the windows are part of helping the HVAC system. It's not a, an item that we wish we could have nicer windows, but that it's actually needed to support the HVAC systems. Um, and then you also spoke about, um, an older roof. Um, so these, these types of needs, if you're talking about in zero to two years, we're going to be in a, um, difficult or challenging situation. Um, and then we're talking about taking a vote, um, sending it to the voters in, in twenty-three or twenty-four. How, I, I don't know how, I, I don't know how this part would work. So we would send it to the voters and then how quickly could these items be addressed? How long is that going to take? You were just mentioning the three-year project.
And we, yep, and we definitely prioritize them, you know, given that we, you know, go to the vote and then that referendum does pass, we would work on prioritizing some of those based on the immediate needs and then trying to intertwine that into the bigger picture, right? Of the bigger, um, how we're correlating like a mechanical system, thinking that holistically throughout the whole facility and not just fixing that, um, thing. So we would prioritize some of those needs that we had, um, to get those addressed right away or the ones that we need to, um, and.
Timeline with that.
Um, you probably, um, you know, we'd probably see some construction, um, if it was a November vote, um, that following summer, um, depending on, you know, the scale of the project, that'd probably be some, typically a design is going to be a full year, so. Um, but we could prioritize some of those earlier, um, and do earlier bid packages, um, and work with Canute, kind of how that would work. Um, so potentially that first summer, if not for sure, the second summer, it would, it would take place. Because again, a typical design period for the whole design will take approximately a year, like Sal has talked about in the past, so.
Thank you. Um, so here we have, you know, another, um, expert before us, letting us know of the specific needs of the high school that have an expiration date. And so I would just ask board members again to consider, um, that we can't wait and push it down. Um, you know, push it over anymore. Are there any other comments or questions for Cole or Dr. Hillman? Okay, Tom, question?
I know I'm spitting in, into the wind, but, you know, the best solution would be just start new. Instead of trying to fix something from the nineteen sixties, as he said, these parts are from, um, make it energy efficient, modern. Um, uh, as the students recognized and, and support, but, you know, ignore them. Um, and we could probably get started even faster with, uh, with new. And, and that's assuming also with remodeling the old stuff, that you don't run into any problems, which, you know, knock on wood on that. Um, so, you know, I'm, like I say, I'm spitting into the wind, but I needed to say that.
Well, and it's good to hear that, I, I mean, I can speak for myself, but I know that other board members here also would like a new building. And that we have to consider what the community is able to, to support.
Well, with more time, it looks like we could take a deeper dive into seeing what a new school would really be. And also, I mean, I, I, I don't necessarily buy the urgency on repairs. I mean, if, if you're a multimillion dollar, you can easily go out and borrow money. And if you need to do those improvements, you just pick out what the priority would be on your forty million first, first in money. And go make those improvements, so, yeah, and, and then with the idea that you think that that would, would pass later and you come with that. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't see any, I mean, I think that this is going to be a split vote anyway, so it's kind of a neat issue. But I'm not, I'm not really drinking the Kool-Aid on urgent, urgent, urgent on, on the repairs. And I, I don't, I, I look at it, the ask is not as important to me as far as what the numbers are as the time. I, I don't think, and my major point was on a, on a special election, basically you're only have four polling places for the entire district. And I believe it'd be like normally twenty-four, so that's roughly eighty-four percent of the district voters. I would like to see have the opportunity to vote at their normal polling place on a normal election year for what promises to be the largest building bond in the history of the school district. So I, I, I just think that that's kind of common sense and that's where I'm coming from, so.
I would like to Val to say, I think Jeff raises an important point about how the school district borrows money. So Val, would you just talk a little bit about how the district borrows money in the absence of a voter-approved bond?
Yep, so we have a handful of strategies, obviously they're restricted. So we can use our LTFM revenue, which we already have bonds that take up above seventeen percent of that revenue annually. And, I mean, that was a, I want to say we've got seven million total bonded with seventeen percent. So seventeen million of that would be a pretty significant chunk to commit to our LTFM revenue. There is sort of like what we did with the Spring Creek addition, where you could sort of do like a lease purchase where a separate agency funds it and then you pay them back over time. That would be an option as well, but then you're committing operating capital dollars to that. Those are really the only two ways we can borrow money that I'm aware of.
And I think it's important for the board and for the, that, you know, Val and Cole and I have ideated all of those different options. And so for example, if we did take those most urgent needs and commit our long-term facilities maintenance dollars or our capital projects dollars to that, we'd be really focusing those in on one building within the district. And yet we are trying to maintain all, one of our hallmarks has been stewardship. We take great care of these buildings. And so for example, the middle school is now getting to, everybody thinks it's the new middle school, right? But it's almost twenty years old, we have to keep taking care of that. So there are things that do need to be updated. And so if we do, if we were to use a strategy like that, Jeff, which I understand the perspective because we looked at it too. It does put a lot of the dollars that we have for the rest of the district into one building. And that's a reason that we had ruled out making a recommendation on that at this point because it just does not provide the flexibility that we'd be able to need to address the other six buildings, you know, in the system. But it's important to understand, as Val always says, we are highly regulated and there's very limited ways that we can go out and get those additional dollars. And as Val shared, we then have to commit existing revenue to that on a long-term basis, removing the flexibility to address other issues. And that's, that's why, that's why you need voter-approved bonds for these kinds of projects, whether it's now or at some point in the future. We, we can't use, there's no way we can use our existing revenue to be able to get all of those kinds of things because they're systems, right? We can't, most of these items, we can't pick à la carte, right? You can't say, we're going to do this part of the system, but not this part of the system. There are some components that you can, but of course, then it's still inefficient. So it's, it's, it doesn't get the same value in operational savings that one of our goals in investing operating dollars, whether it be, or operating capital dollars, whether it be LTFM or capital, is are we able to make the systems more efficient from an operational perspective? So that we're spending less general fund money on an annual basis on those kinds of bills? So we can put more of those dollars into teachers in our classrooms, if that makes sense. So whenever we do anything with bond money, we are always looking, how can we realize an operational savings? And it's just one of the core commitments that we have for each other is that our goal is to pay for people to do good things for kids. So we want to put as little operating, as much as we need, right? But we want to put as little as we need into that ongoing maintenance of buildings. We want to be strategic, forward-thinking. We just don't believe that it's responsible for us to recommend something that would use existing dollars to be able to do that.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Julie?
So I just wanted to, to clarify then, my motion, which includes three questions, would total eighteen, or excuse me, eighty million, eighty to eighty-one point seven million. And in two thousand seventeen, the school district did ask the voters for a hundred and nine million dollar bond referendum. So we would be at eighty versus the previous district, or previous high for the district was a hundred and nine million. So we would not be reaching that level with this ask.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, any other questions for Cole? Questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Cole. Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Hillman? Okay, seeing there is no more discussion, then we will be voting on the amended motion that Julie just described. And this will be a roll call vote, if Anita will facilitate.
Broniak?
No.
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
No.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
No.
Okay, thank you, yep. Okay, so the motion does not pass, we're at three-three. Okay, thank you, board members, for your excellent comments and discussion tonight. The next item is the Northfield High School Facility Election Timeline. And we won't be discussing that as our motion on the facility improvement plan did not landed at three-three. Okay, item C, Discussion of Girls Swim Dive Cooperative Sponsorship. The board is requested to approve the dissolution of the Girls Swim Dive Cooperative Sponsorship with Randolph Independent School District, one ninety-five, beginning with the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Note that the governing boards of each participating school must jointly make an application for dissolution of cooperative sponsorship to the Minnesota State High School League. Is there a motion to approve the dissolution of Girls Swim Dive Cooperative Sponsorship between Northfield Public Schools and Randolph Public Schools, beginning twenty-three, twenty-four school year? Moved by Julie, second. Right, Jeff? Thank you. Is there, are there any comments or discussion board members would like to, any questions they'd like to have answered? Yes, Julie?
I just want to thank Dr. Hillman and Activities Director, Bobby Sullivan, for taking a broader, you know, that this precipitated a, a broader look at, at the, how we enter into, to cooperative partnerships with other school districts and the work that will lead to, you know, some, some set sort of parameters and, and guidelines to making these decisions going forward.
Hey, any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item D are policy recommendations. Is there a motion to approve the Policy Committee's recommended updates to Policy six oh three, six fifty-two point one, six fifty-two? These are updates to the procedures for Policy six fifty-two point one and to Sunset Policy six fifty-one. Moved by Tom, second. Second by Amy, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on these policies? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes, moving along. Item E is the LMR Media Contract presented at our last board meeting. Is there a motion to authorize administration to enter into a contract with LMR Media related, M, LMR Media related to sponsorship of district families and equipment through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three? Okay, moved by Corey, second by Amy. Are there, would you like to make any comments, Dr. Hillman?
Nope, we're just very excited about this opportunity to work with LMR Media to implement the policy that we have about sponsoring district facilities and equipment. Facilities and equipment, and so, you know, this is a, a group that knows how to do this. We don't have a, a department that handles this, so we're very excited about launching this potential revenue source that is funded outside of property taxes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item F. We will certify, this is certify final twenty-twenty-two payable twenty-twenty-three tax levy. This action completes the school district's process that began in September with the preliminary levy certification to the Rice, Dakota and Good Hugh Counties and the Minnesota Department of Education. We have reviewed and analyzed MD's calculation and the estimate of the school district's property tax base by Rice, Dakota and Good Hugh Counties. We heard the truth in taxation presentation earlier this evening. This levy payable in twenty-twenty-three will be a component of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal budget. Is there a motion to certify to county auditors the twenty-twenty-two payable twenty-twenty-three final certified levy limitation and certification report in the amount of twenty-one million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred forty and twenty-four cents? This represents a five point six-three percent increase from the prior year. Moved by Amy, second. Second by Corey. Is there any questions or, Dr. Hillman, would you like to make any comments?
No, we just appreciate Val's thorough presentation and the questions and the people who came forward tonight to ask questions about the tax levy at public comment, that's great, we appreciate people participating.
Perfect. Questions or comments? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item G, Fiscal Year Twenty-Two, Twenty-Two-Three General Fund Budget Revision. The board is asked to approve the revisions to the Fiscal Year Twenty-Three General Budget as presented. The adopted general fund revenue and expenditure budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-Three was fifty-nine million, seven hundred eighty-one, one hundred seventy-five and sixty-one million, three hundred eight, nine hundred fifty-eight respective, respectively. The recommended revised budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-Three is revenues of fifty-nine million, seven hundred eighty-six, one hundred eighty-eight and expenditures of sixty-one million, six hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-two. The major factors contributing to these changes include the final audited data from Fiscal Year Twenty-Two, coronavirus relief funding, enrollment data and increased health insurance premiums. Is there a motion to approve the revised twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget of revenues as presented? Moved by Tom, second. Second by Julie. Okay, any questions or comments?
And I think just to be clear, we had to just add an error in, in part, it's the twenty-two, twenty-three budget revision for this year. Just as a clarification, my apologies for that typo.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, our final item is, hold on, I gotta open up the table. Okay, our final item for individual action is a resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. The board is asked to approve the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. School board member Noel Stratmon has provided notification of his inability to serve as a member of the school board and attend meetings due to illness effective on December nine, twenty-twenty-two. This vacancy is governed by Minnesota State Statute one twenty-three B point oh four subdivision four regarding a vacancy for not less than ninety days because of illness or prolonged absence from the district. And it is the intent of the sport to fill this vacancy and appoint a school board member at the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three school board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence effective December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two? Moved by Julie. Second by Corey. Any comments?
Yeah, I just, if I can just make a couple of comments, this is obviously an unusual circumstance. And I know many people know, you know, that Noel Stratmon is just one of the rock stars of school boards in Minnesota. He is, according to the School Boards Association, Noel is currently the longest active, actively serving school board member. He was first elected in nineteen eighty-two and we've gone back and forth. We think he's been elected about a dozen times because back early in when he was first elected, elections took place every other year. And so as, as said in the resolution, Noel is just, his, his health is at the point where he feels that he won't be able to attend meetings because of his illness for the next, at least the next ninety days. So again, I want to emphasize that this is governed under one twenty-three B oh nine subdivision four. In the packet, what I did put in, I did share with you the statute, I did share you the appropriate segment of the statute. I, well, everyone who's at this board table and in our, at our meeting tonight and everyone watching joins me and the rest of the community and wishing Noel a very speedy recovery, just a pillar of our community. And so in talking with him, we want to put someone in his stead until such time that he is able to return. So I've given you a timeline, so we did receive his temporary resignation on December ninth. We're going to ask you to approve the resolution this evening. Beginning tomorrow, what we would do is launch a, an online interest form for anyone in the community who might be interested in serving as a board. You have the, the board that is seated in January has the authority to appoint this person. It's a little bit different that if the person resigned because they were taking a job and moving and leaving the district and were no longer eligible to, to serve. So we would invite through our school district email to all families, through KYM and Radio, Northfield News, invite anyone, any, and the website, you know, any district resident who would have an interest in serving in this capacity to complete an online form. That online form would be available through January third at four PM. We would then take all of that information, get that to board members so that they would be able to view it ahead of time. We'll give you more information about how that process, that nomination process and appointment would go on January ninth. We would intend to have that vote be at the end of the meeting so that the new board member, because the new board member in this particular case is seated immediately under the statute, this would give them the opportunity to be prepared for the next meeting. So this is just the timeline in general, we'll provide the board with more technical details about how that nomination and appointment process goes in January. But just to make sure that even though it's a temporary appointment and what would happen is when Noel feels well enough to be able to come back and complete his service, he basically submits another letter, you take another resolution and Noel will return to that seat. We do want to have a transparent process, we want to invite the public to be considered for that position. And so that is the timeline that we have right now, we would start executing that tomorrow. I just, that's not necessarily specific to you voting on the resolution, but I felt it was important to fill in those details at this point, it seemed like the appropriate point.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, this is a resolution, so Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Broniak?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Okay, we're on to item eight, items for information, we have an enrollment report, Dr. Hillman will be reviewing the December twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two enrollment report.
Yeah, so if you'll take a look at the enrollment report, you know to take a look at that segment that talks about a full-time only, excluding early childhood and part-time independent study students. You see, we have really evened off and so we are, as of the November, excuse me, the December first count, we are at three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. You see that that is still ahead of the projection that we had within the budget at thirty-seven and twenty-seven. And so that's an important piece for you to look at, you can see that we've had just pretty fairly stable enrollment here in the last month with just five down compared to the previous month before.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Yes, Tom?
Out of curiosity, in.
Um out of curiosity, in um Bridgewater, it looks like the kindergarten is down about twenty from the um other grades. Um turn a explanation?
So, you know, it is interesting, Bridgewater, this is the smallest kindergarten class that Bridgewater has had in at least fifteen years. Uh and so, and then coincidentally, on the other side of town, Greenville Park has one of its largest kindergarten classes in the last fifteen years. Um my hypothesis, Tom, is that the new homes that feed into Bridgewater have been there, you know, for more than five years. So much likes we saw in with Spring Creek about five years ago, where there was that, we had that real bump at Spring Creek for a long time as there was the development on that side of town. I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods, twenty-some kids got on the elementary school bus stop. A lot less get on now just because of the life cycle of that, of those housings. That's my hunch at this point. I can't tell you the specific reasons. Um but that would be my hypothesis right now.
And and I was gonna bring up Greenville also, because they're up about the same twenty. My hypothesis, of course, is that it's because of a new modern school that they can attend.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Hillman. All right, um we have a winter orchestra concert. The annual winter orchestra concert is a Monday, December nineteen, beginning at six P M at the Northfield Middle School. Board members should have received an invitation and you are encouraged to attend. Um we have our future meetings are set. Tom and Julie are not off the hook yet. We have a special board meeting Thursday, December twenty-second at five fifteen here in the district office boardroom. Um Monday, January nine, twenty twenty-three, six P M is our organizational board meeting, followed immediately by the regular board meeting. And Monday, January twenty-third at six P M, a regular um board meeting.
Claudia, just like to mention, just to make it clear that that special board meeting on December twenty-second is when the auditors will be here to present the annual audit and the board will be asked to accept the audit at that time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the business that we have for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Amy, second. Second by Corey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the all those opposed. Okay, motion carries, we are adjourned.